Hello, good evening everyone. People listening and the team, hello to you all. We are delighted this evening to have Shanika Mahendran join us for an interview that Paul's going to be leading. And Shanika is the Cabinet Member for Planning and Placemaking at Milton Keynes City Council. So welcome Shanika. Charlie's not with us, he's doing a little debate in the House of Lords on the Planning and Infrastructure Bill. So nothing important enough to keep him away from hosting the show. But we are assured that he'll be turning up to talk about the news in due course. As always, thank you for staying with us this season. I think this is probably our last episode of the summer. So thanks for sticking along with us and go off and enjoy some holidays and enjoy. Rejoin us when we come back in, is it September Sasha?
Yeah, 18th.
Good stuff, so we'll be advertising that on LinkedIn and all the usual channels. As always, please consider giving a charitable donation in lieu of a joining fee and to any charity that you like. But the ones that we particularly support are advertised on our website. As you may guess, I've stepped in quite last minute for this. Have I missed anything guys? No, good, well, we shall move on to introductions then, and I'll announce our theme for this evening, which predictably but brilliantly is Milton Keynes. That's Shanika's chosen theme. And I'm going to ask you Shanika, first of all, to introduce yourself. Tell us where you are, what you're drinking, if anything, and how you are honouring this evening's theme.
I am shamefully not in Milton Keynes today. I am joining you from Parliament, I've had to come down for something today. But I am councillor Shanika Mahendran, as you said, I'm Cabinet Member for Planning and Placemaking on Milton Keynes City Council. And I am drinking Diet Coke, not through choice, I am a Pepsi Max girl, but apparently they don't sell that in Parliament. So just another thing wrong with Parliament. And I am representing Milton Keynes theme this evening through myself as a born and bred Milton Keynesian.
Good stuff, well, we're really, really pleased to have you this evening and look forward to your interview in due course. Paul, tell us a bit about your background.
Yes, so one of the events of my life took place in Milton Keynes on the 28th of June 1986, which I'm guessing you will be in the minus years for Shanika. So that was the Milton Keynes Garden Party headlined by, ah, can't do the right way around, headlined by Marillion. Come do it, with Gary Moore as number two, Jethro Tull, my first ever major concert. And I had organised myself sufficiently well that ended up sleeping the night on Birmingham New Street Station, which is not something I can strongly recommend to anybody. However, 28th of June, seared in my memory, Milton Keynes Bowl, what an awesome, awesome, awesome evening.
Excellent, good stuff.
I'll get rid of it now.
Sasha, hi, good evening.
Hello, good evening Thea, I'm in the delights of Northern Ireland. I'm about 500 metres from Jarts Causeway to those who have visited it. And I'm here for watching men hit a very small round ball round a golf course for four days. And I've enjoyed seeing Rory and Bryson and various others.
Excellent, good stuff. Chris, hi, you still on inquiry?
Yeah, yeah, we're in the 138th week of the sitting born inquiry. I'm still drinking water and it's baking hot because we don't have air conditioning. Christina Downs is keeping us all going though, nine o'clock start this morning. And Milton Keynes, I love Milton Keynes because on top of all your shopping centres, you've got a ski slope, which is just extraordinary. So I've been there with my family members and that is the exact opposite of the temperature that I now am.
Good stuff. And Thea Ossman Smith, and I need to say, I'm having a brilliant week. I've had three positive decisions in the green belts, renewable and low carbon. So that's a really great week. And one of them, we only closed the inquiry on Friday in front of Philip Major, who brilliantly got his decision out today in light of forthcoming grid deadlines. So a big thank you to Inspector Major for that brilliant turnaround. And if anyone has seen today's tour, stage of the Tour de France, I won't spoil it for anyone who hasn't seen it, but that was an absolutely cracking stage. So those are my high points of the week, nothing to do with Milton Keynes, I'm afraid Shanika, but there we are. And we are going to kick off with Chris today talking to us about a data centre.
We are, I'm going to talk about the green belt and it's not housing, it's a data centre. So if we bring the case up, you'll see that this is a Secretary of State decision. And it's a decision made by Grace Stoke, which is a firm that some of us know. And it's in Buckinghamshire. And the decision was made by Matthew Pennycook. The decision was of George Baird, who held a public inquiry in December. And as you can see, it's 72,000 square metres delivered across two buildings and includes landscaping, et cetera, et cetera. Now, what's particularly interesting about this case is that there was a previous appeal on this site. So if we go to paragraphs and looking at the case, we can see paragraph five, the Secretary of State is aware that an appeal for a larger data centre consisting of three buildings of 163,000 square metres on the site was recovered by the previous Secretary of State, I don't know if you remember, but that would be of a different party, and was dismissed in October 2023. And throughout this Secretary of State decision, the previous decision is referred to as Woodlands One. And the Secretary of State obviously acknowledging, as the inspector did, that that decision was obviously a material consideration to be taken into account. Paragraph six, the Secretary of State quite rightly records that the National Planning Policy Framework was amended in December 2024, how could we forget that? And of course, the decision was then made in light of the new MPBF with its new approach to green belt and in particular grey belt. If we go in through the decision, look at some of the issues. The Secretary of State considered that the development would represent an incongruous pattern of development and that the site makes a strong, strong contribution to meeting the objective and as such does not fall to be considered as grey belt. And that was, that was the Secretary of State considering the inspector's position. But if we go to paragraph 23, we see Matthew Pennycook, who was the author of the decision on behalf of the Secretary of State, considers that if developed, there would not be an incongruous pattern of development, which should see everybody scrambling for a plan of the development. And to see exactly what it was that the Secretary of State considered wasn't incongruous when considered with the other developments around either. And did that in terms of this built development, it provides a boundary to the north and south of the appeal site. Furthermore, Secretary of State considered there are physical features that could restrict and contain the development, which included the pattern of built development surrounding the site, the River Cole and of course the M25. And therefore concludes that the site does not strongly contribute to purpose A. Now, that's a really important decision and obviously you'll need to speak to David Hutchinson, who's a planning consultant. If you want to see what the plans look like, it will be, I'm sure, a matter of significant interest. Moving on through the decision, having reached that conclusion, Secretary of State agreed with the inspector. The site does not form a substantial part of the gap between Uxbridge and Slough. So this is the coalescence point, it would not result in a material loss of visual separation. So she agrees with the inspector, there's no conflict with purpose B of the green belt purposes. Next paragraph, Secretary of State considered there no conflict with purpose D relating to the historic towns. There's no historic towns identified and this is not disputed between the parties. She does not consider the matters in footnote seven would provide a strong reason for refusing and therefore overall finds the site is grey belt. So that is contrary to the inspector's conclusion. And therefore, the Secretary of State had to go on and consider the golden rules. So if we have a look next at paragraph 26, the inspector concluded the site was having decided not grey belt. He therefore did not can go on to consider whether the proposal meets the criteria in the remaining limbs. Obviously, it's a reporting case to the Secretary of State, so some inspectors might have looked at that. The inspector didn't look at that, however, that's no difficulty at all because the Secretary of State herself went on to consider this. And if we go to paragraph 27, we can see the Secretary of State has taken into account the above conclusions, agrees with the inspector's conclusions, the scale of development would represent encroachments into the countryside in conflict with purpose C and that this would give rise to moderate harm. She also took into account the extent of the development site in the context of the remaining green belt, which of course you have to do. And overall, she concludes the development would not fundamentally undermine the purposes when taken together of the remaining green belt across the area of the plan. Remember, criteria C isn't necessary for establishing whether it's grey belt, but it is necessary for considering whether there would be further harm. And then, of course, there was need because this was a significant amount of power around, close to Heathrow and in the Slough availability zone, the S A Z. And as a consequence of which was considered and concluded to be not inappropriate development. The conclusion, of course, obviously that it was in a sustainable location as well. So a really interesting case and really significant in terms of grappling with the issue of what is incongruous. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chris, really helpful. And as if by magic, here appears Lord Banner to give us the news.
Hi Thea, hello everybody, I'm so sorry I'm late. Hello Shanika too, I have to be back in the chamber when the debate on judicial review starts in a few minutes.
I thought you were at home.
I'm at home, it's the first time your background at home, Chris, has been beaten in terms of ironial qualities. Anyway, the news. So firstly, the Planning and Infrastructure Bill has started its first day of committee in the House of Lords today. That's the detailed scrutiny stage where proposed amendments are being considered, literally right now, about 10 steps away from where I am. Key themes that are coming up today are the need for greater proportionality in planning. No more lorry loads of environmental statements and 2,000 questions of DCO examinations. There seems to be quite a lot of enthusiasm around the house for that. I've got some amendments down on matters such as dealing with Hillside, stopping the clock for JR when a planning commission is under challenge. The government seems to be in listening mode, there's a lot of kind of cross-party constructive discussions here. So watch this space, it's going to committee stage and then continue next Thursday. And then throughout September, the attention seems to be that it will then go back to the House of Commons, late September, October, with you to get the bill into law. I think ideally they'd like to do that before party conference season, that may or may not happen. Second news issue, part three, there are reports this evening, including on Twitter, that the government has made some quite significant concessions to the environmental lobbies on part three. I've seen some of the details of that, but I'm not yet sure whether it's, it's public. But it's probably worth keeping an eye on the news this evening and tomorrow morning. I'm hearing that both the pro-growth lobbies and the environmental lobbies are not entirely satisfied. The environmental side think that these concessions don't go far enough and the pro-growth people think they're too far. So the perils of being in government, you can't please everybody and the danger is you end up pleasing nobody. The civil procedure rules, the changes to CPR that are necessary to implement the aspects of the independent review of judicial review, challenges to NCIPS that Nick Grant and I did. Those CPR rules apparently are to be published today or have been published today, I can't find them on the internet yet. clause 12 of the bill gives effect to the aspects, the recommendations that require primary legislation, but most of them require changes to CPR in terms of case management, confidence to JR, et cetera. So apparently they are going live today, but I haven't seen them. And then lastly, doing safety regulation, something of huge significance, including probably Shanika to your area because tall buildings are obviously very much in vogue in Milton Keynes, as we well know. And so the government announced, actually I think just before our last episode, but it's only just kind of come on my radar. They announced at the very end of June, a new fast track process for new bill for the Building Safety Regulator. About time, anyone involved in tall building schemes will know that the gateway process can take several months. It would take up to 18 months to get to gateway two, which is quite difficult when in relation to issues such as viability review mechanisms, time limits for commencing development, et cetera. Anyway, that's being fast tracked, there's a new non-executive chair of the BSR, who clearly seems to be appointed with a brief of getting things done quickly. And again, the mood music at the ministry seems to be that the BSR process is going to be effectively streamlined, which will be welcome news to everybody. So that's the news, I'm going to run back in again and make sure I don't miss the start because you have to be there at the start of everyone speaking it and then I'm going to run back out for the interview.
Charlie, did I hear you correctly that you're seeking to sort out the mess that is Hillside?
Yes, I am.
Is there a walk of shame that we can send you down in order to do that?
Well, it's my mess, the hell it is. Because I'm not.
Exactly. You should be stark naked, having the profession throwing fruit at you. I'm just saying.
Shame, with a ring the bell, wasn't that belting? Exactly.
We'll set it up for September.
Isn't it nice, isn't it nice that he can solve, solve the problem for us? I think that's poetic justice.
Absolutely. They've got some theme of Milton Keynes, I was going to mention my, my appearance on stage with John Bon Jovi at the Milton Keynes Bowl. But as I said, the wonderful thing about Milton Keynes being a new town is Paul is older than it, a new city even. So what's it like being older than one of the, one of the country's greatest collaborations, Paul?
Sorry, is he still on this show? Can we just get him off?
You can tell it's the end of season, you can tell it's the end of season, we're all losing, aren't we?
And Sasha, fittingly, you're going to talk to us about a golf course.
I am, I am, before I do though, I do have to mention Chris's case, just show how fast and speedy planning is. I did a planning inquiry in 1995 on that very site, trying to get an MSA built back in 95. One of the schemes that actually should have got consent, but didn't for political reasons. But anyone who's caught short between junctions 15 and 16 blamed the Conservative government of John Major, who basically decided there shouldn't be an MSA on that part of the motorway network.
There's terrible congestion in that bit, so your caught short thing is particularly relevant.
It is, it is, it's genuinely the place that most needs an MSA in the whole of Britain, but there we go. Right, I'm going to take you down to Sussex and talk about Horsham Golf Course Appeal. And Bob will show us the decision, this is a decision of Dominic Young, it's a decision of the 11th of July. Before we move on, it's quite interesting, look at, it's a very varied and probably unique scheme because what starts off being a development for sports and leisure hub, obviously on a golf club, golf course. Also, however, has golf college, a sports clubhouse, an educational facility for Warren Clark Golfing Dreams, which seeks to teach those who are, who are potentially have difficulties learning golf, et cetera. A local centre containing a convenience store, co-working space. And then we've also got outdoor sport and leisure provision, particularly for hockey and the provision of golf. And then the sting in the tail, it's also not only got 800 dwellings. So a very significant development by the generator group. There were three main issues that inspector had to grapple with. The council started off with nine reasons of refusal, but as we often know, once mines were concentrated in the run-up to the appeal, it was reduced to three. And the three were effectively an allegation the proposal was contrary to the development plan. In particular, the settlement boundaries set out near development plan. Secondly, landscape impact, which is not unsurprising view of the scale and nature of the development. And thirdly, whether it could actually be accessible by sustainable forms of transport. Now, I think the decision is really quite interesting because remember the scale of the development we're talking about. And the inspector concludes that the overall effect on landscape impact would only deserve moderate weight, not significant. So it's quite an interesting decision where an inspector's got the courage to say only moderate weight to that level of a development. Secondly, in relation to sustainable travel, it is noteworthy, although the scheme is beyond the settlement boundary of Horsham, it lies next to the existing park and ride facility. Additionally, the developers made quite a large contribution to the enhancement of the bus service. And also, as all of us know, who knows Sussex reasonably well, Horsham has a very good service and the golden hour, 57 minutes to London Victoria from Horsham. So all in all, the inspector did not accept the views of the LPA that the scheme would be unsustainable or not available for all forms of, of transport. And it's also noteworthy, for those of you, the old chestnut of what are the 800 metres and the IHT guidance, et cetera, and what weight should be given to those. And the inspector's not particularly keen, which I think is quite pragmatic and sensible of this in the circumstances of a site such as that. So then we're left with the last issue, which is what weight do you give to a development plan that's of some vintage? And basically, the council had no five-year housing land supply. And in this decision, the inspector's pretty clear that the development plan and its settlement boundary policies are out of date. The tilt and balance is in play. And the benefits that the inspector looks at, again, very interesting, housing, including affordable housing, given very significant weight in the balance. Water neutrality, also substantial weight in the planning balance in favour. Improved sports facilities, significant weight. Golfing Dreams Academy that I mentioned, significant weight. Transport improvements, significant weight. Commercial employment, moderate weight. Cumulatively, you can imagine, the inspector concluded in a tilted balance context that the impacts, as I previously mentioned, which pretty much amounted very limited weight to an out-of-date development plan, a moderate weight to landscape impact patently and logically and mathematically cannot outweigh the benefits that the inspector concluded. So the overall conclusion was to grant consent for that scheme. And it's also noteworthy, a Horsham, as we all know, is having problems with its emerging plan. And one of the key other conclusions of the inspector in this decision was that frankly, the emerging development plan would not solve the housing issues that arose in Horsham. So the moral of the story is devote as many resources as possible to an up-to-date development plan and save you a hell of a lot of headaches frankly. Thank you very much, Thea.
Thank you, I think we've just had an insight into your closing submissions Sasha, logically and mathematically. I'm going to be using that in my next inquiry, so thank you. With that, I'm going to take us to Milton Keynes and try not to look at the screen too much for any disapproving looks to a proposal for up to 467 apartments over 21 storeys and leisure uses, including bars, outdoor sports and a cinema on Midsummer Boulevard in Milton Keynes. So this was an appeal heard by Inspector Griffiths at a public inquiry opening in March this year. It sat for five days and the main issue was the historic environment. As with Sasha's, there was quite a few reasons for refusal, but they fell away as the appeal went on. Now, the heritage became a main reason because the scheme proposed to demolish the point, which is a non-designated heritage asset and one which has been a feature of the boulevard since it opened in 1985, a year I have a special affinity with. And you'll see the point down there at the bottom right of your schemes, of your screens. And opposite it, you may notice a very long building, which we'll come to in due course because that's a grade two listed shopping building. But since the point opened, it has become a building in decline. At the time it was opened, it was the tallest building, building in Milton Keynes and its pyramid frame was lit in red. I'm sure people in Milton Keynes will know that site very well. It was visible from afar and said the inspector gave the building a landmark quality. Now, the difference is today, the inspector thought that the building was in a very sorry state, largely unused and has a somewhat uncared-for appearance. And the inspector recognised that the building does have a special place in the memory of the people of Milton Keynes and beyond. And its loss would be a shame, but he also considered based on the evidence that the point had clearly outlived its purpose and there is no realistic prospect for its effective reuse. So one of the key issues was the contribution that the point made to the significance of the grade two listed shopping building, which as I said was opposite. And that's a building which the inspector described as unashamedly modernist. And that shares a group value with the point which is in its setting. But the inspector found that while the scheme's height would contrast to the horizontality of the shopping building, there would be a significant degree of separation and that contrast would not be an injurious one since the monumental scale of the shopping building offers a degree of robustness such that a single proposal like the appeal scheme would offer no real challenge to its supremacy. And the language in this decision letter is brilliant, so go and read it just for that reason alone. But you'll be able to see on your screen now, this is the, the proposed development. And you'll see the backdrop there is the shopping building and in the foreground is, is what was proposed. And you'll notice block C is the tallest structure and that has a red lit structure on the top, which was referred to as the crown, which the inspector noted would be a respectful and intelligent way of recognising the building that formerly occupied the site and its landmark quality. So that was a really interesting nod, said the inspector, to the shopping building. But where the, the harm arose here was the loss of the group value and in respect to views from the shopping building, because the scheme would block off much more of the sky than the existing structure in views out of the listed building. But the inspector found that that less than substantial harm was at the lower end of the scale for the reasons that he set out at paragraphs 33 to 35, and there were three main reasons. The first was that there was no direct impact on the shopping building. And given that's where most of the significance lies, that inevitably reduced the level of harm. And the inspector noted that key parts of its significance would be unaffected. The second was that the proposal occupied only a small part of the setting. Much of the setting would remain allowing the appreciation of the listed building. And finally, the loss of that group value, although that would be a loss, wouldn't devalue the significance of the listed building to any great degree. And in any event, the proposals echoed the relationship that would previously have existed between the point and the shopping building. So I think that's a really useful way of understanding the impact on heritage assets, to really understand what the significance of the asset you're concerned with is and how much of that can really be affected by something that's changing in its setting. And I think that's something that a lot of decision makers sometimes will fail to grapple with. There's, there's three other points I want to pick up on from the decision letter, which I think are quite useful. The first is that the council here could demonstrate a five-year housing land supply, but at paragraph 38, the inspector made clear that's not a cap. He said that the objective of government, of course, is to significantly boost the supply of housing and not just in areas that can, that can't demonstrate the five-year housing land supply. He said the housing crisis is a national one after all. And that's really interesting, I think, as a call for every authority to do their bit towards the national picture. The next is economic benefits and they were given significant weight by reference to the MPBF. And very often, there's an argument made that economic benefits are a generic benefit of any scheme, that doesn't diminish their value. And the inspector noted that the construction industry is an important driver in economic growth. And finally, the inspector addressed the fallback that the point should remain, that's the, the building to be demolished, despite the fact that it's largely unused, semi-derelict in appearance. He said that to suggest that it should remain would serve to fossilise an important city centre site that is largely moribund and crying out for effective reuse, bringing the site into effective reuse. He regarded as a very positive and efficient use of the site and good for the character and appearance of the city. So very well done to Charlie and his team on that decision, and of course to the inspector. And with that, I think, Paul, I pass over to you for your interview with Shanika.
Thank you very much indeed Thea, and thank you Shanika for, for being magnanimous enough to still come on the programme, notwithstanding that we were covering that case. Obviously, we've tried to get rid of Charlie and to minimise his role as a result. So Shanika, you've already been introduced as the Cabinet Member for Planning and Placemaking at Milton Keynes Council. However, you have many accolades, I'm delighted to say. You were the first Asian woman and the youngest ever councillor to join the cabinet in Milton Keynes, initially being Cabinet Member for Economic Matters. You were Planning Committee Chair in 2022, 2023. You were also in Keir Starmer's team, improving campaigning and focusing on diversity amongst the elected representatives. You previously worked the Labour Climate and Environmental Forum, focusing on transportation and air quality. You've got a Master of Science degree in sustainable cities from, from King's College London. You've got a first-class degree in art history and journalism. You're a member of the Local Government Association's Improvements and Innovation Board, you're a trustee. It just goes on, I mean, it literally goes on. How on earth have you fitted all that in, in so few years, looking at your youthful good looks? So what first attracted you to the world of politics, rather than using that fantastic CV and going into the? rather than using that fantastic C V and going into the world of consultancy or that of development?
Um, I think partly a desire to never make any money. People talk about uh us getting sort of brown envelopes. I think if they saw my car, they would know that that doesn't happen in reality. Um, but I think, as a lot of people say, I sort of uh fell into to politics. Um, I got involved in politics at a time where I'd um just dropped out of my first university. I'd moved home um and I was a bit lost with what to do with myself. And as some sort of um guardian angel, someone who was canvassing for the Labour Party came and knocked on my door. Um, and I mentioned I was a member and he um invited me out canvassing and it kind of all all spiralled from there. Um, neither of my parents were political um growing up. So my mum's from Northern Ireland and my dad's a Tamil from Sri Lanka. So for both of them, they have uh quite a lot of violence attached to politics. So it wasn't really something that we discussed discussed growing up. Um, but both of them did work in in the N H S. So I think from them, um I got the sense that the best thing that you can do with your life is to help other people. Um, and with all the sort of things I do, I do get asked a lot how I manage to keep going with it all or how I find the energy. I'm really serving um my community and serving people is the only thing that gets me out of bed in the morning. Um, so I find it quite quite easy.
I I'm now thoroughly humbled, although I have to say I'm loving the Northern Ireland theme to all this. Sasha up by the Giant's Causeway, I was the Titanic Hotel earlier on this week showing relatives round Belfast. You're from Northern, you've got relatives, parents from Northern Ireland, loving the theme. Um, so during your stellar career, a meteoric rise through uh the ranks of local government, what have you found most rewarding and what what's most disappointing about your experience?
Um, I think I'll start with the the disappointing bit first. Um, I think what I found most disappointing, I've got a rogue M P trying to come in in the background. You're attached to my chair, I think. Um, I was about to say something really deep as well.
Is this fine? Have I ruined the entire recording now?
Possibly.
It's it's going out live, I'm delighted to say. Is it actually? It it is absolutely going out live.
Hello, everyone.
This is Chris Curtis.
I believe in building things.
He believes in building things.
You just couldn't make this up. Hello, Chris.
Oh, yeah, how's it going?
You can come on the show later.
I will do. I promise.
Right, back to the question.
I think we were disappointing before we went on to the most random of of of.
Tangents. Um, so disappointing um is definitely sort of the experience of being a young B M E woman in politics. Um, I first, when I first got elected, I came into the council and sort of in my first week, I'd sat down and been called by every name of every other Asian councillor in the council, even ones who had sort of twenty years difference between me and them or that were in different parties. Um, when I, you mentioned I was chair of the planning committee, when I became chair of the planning committee, um, the opposition said that that sent the wrong message to the people of Milton Keynes. Um, and sort of on and on since then, um you do find that you have to work ten times harder when you walk into a room than if you had a middle aged um white British counterpart. Um, and it's, that's been really difficult because I've always been really passionate about bringing more diversity into local government. But when I first got elected, I had a moment of thinking this is not something that I want to bring other young women into or other B M E people into. Um, but thankfully I've moved past that quite a bit. Um, so that's the disappointing part. In terms of the rewarding part, um, just being able to do the day to day part of being councillor, which is just getting casework done for residents and being able to help people. Um, but also now as cabinet member for planning, getting to sort of have a hand in shaping the city that I grew up in is something really rewarding.
Quite very special. Um, right, next question, hopefully Chris Curtis M P is now out of the room. Um, because this is the one where I'm going to invite you not to be political, but to be uh objective and open about it. So Milton Keynes uh is currently Labour control, having regained the majority after twenty four years of being out of power uh in twenty twenty four. So what's the difference between the different approach of the political parties uh to the governance of of a city like Milton Keynes?
I think um particularly when it comes to planning and development, it's quite a stark difference. Um, so as a Labour administration and as a Labour cabinet member, we're sort of unashamedly pro-growth and pro-development. Um, we want to see growth, um not just for the sake of building houses, but because it's a fundamental labour value that people should have. Um, a home, a safe and secure home, um and increasing housing supply is really key to that. But also all of the benefits that come with growth in terms of economic development and um infrastructure. Um, and we're, we've also been able to deliver thirty two percent affordable homes alongside our growth, which is incredibly important. Um, so really, we're pro-growth and pro-development because I fundamentally believe that's the progressive position to take and that's a values led position. Um, but locally, um our opponents have opposed house building. Um, Chris is uh the M P that Chris beat in the election. Um, ran their entire campaign on um tackling the the housing figure that we were proposing in our new local plan, so to have sixty thousand homes. The entire campaign was Labour wants to bring you sixty thousand new homes as if that's a bad thing. Um, and that did not serve him well electorally. Um, so we know that um or I believe that it's really important that we have Labour at the helm of a progressive city like Milton Keynes because our growth has got us to where we are and it will get us to where we want to go as well.
We we could talk a great deal and there are certain receptive members on on this particular panel to to that discussion. But but I'll move on. So we we often talk on the show about the pressures that are on members, officers and indeed barristers uh in the planning world by disgruntled members of the public. How do you think that we can best de-escalate the passions and the planning decisions uh that that planning decisions seem to engender? And I'm mindful in this sense that you are a mental health advocate. So how how do we go about just having a grown up conversation rather than shouting at each other?
Yeah, I think firstly, I I I want to acknowledge that I think there are different challenges that are faced by um elected members and by planning officers. Um, as a politician, I have to some extent signed up to having people say negative things about me or to have my name dragged through the dirt a bit. Um, but planning officers um work really, really hard. In Milton Keynes, I'm exceptionally proud of our planning officers and I think they do an incredible job. They're constantly having their professional judgement, their integrity questioned quite publicly. And whereas as an elected member, I have the ability to defend myself, they don't have that ability. Um, and they have to just sort of take it on the chin. Um, so I think that's a really important point that I always keep in mind um in that debate. But I think um there's a few, there's a few answers to the question, I think. The main one is that we educate people about the planning process and how it works. Um, what the planning process does and what it doesn't do, particularly in terms of uh sort of material considerations and what we're taking into account when it comes to planning decisions. Um, I actually just had a a full council meeting last night where we had a debate on children's homes. Um, because we've had a huge amount of uh applications to to change residential homes and into children's homes. And of course, in the planning system, if theoretically that home is operating in the same way as um a residential property would with um the same number of people as you would have in a family. Um, then then that is deemed acceptable. Um, but there were members of the council who were sort of saying that we should be taking into account the the motivations of profiteering providers and things like that. And that's not something that's for the planning process, that's for children's social care. Um, so having those sort of grown up discussions about what the planning process is for is really important, I think. Um, and as you mentioned, just having an honest conversation, these are often quite emotive discussions, what's going to be going next door to you. Um, people feel like their safety and security is being impinged upon in in their own home, which is quite a quite a serious thing. Um, but again, I think it's just about educating people and having that grown up discussion. So one of the uh, one of the earlier meetings I had as Chair of Planning Committee um was for a really contentious application for a temple that had been through um the sort of through the runs before. And there was a huge amount of emotion behind it. And we had an entirely full gallery, we had to open a room next door with a T V screen on so people could go and watch it from there. Um, and I I actually ended up really enjoying chairing that meeting because um I tried to set out the sort of adult discussion we were going to have. Um, what we would be discussing, what we wouldn't be discussing, and that we would be respecting people's opinions. But when it came in this application, it was specifically to do with parking. Um, and there were um existing parking issues in the area, just having a grown up discussion saying, look, you can't expect this application to fix existing parking issues. It only needs to sort of wash its own hands, it can't be resolving all of this. Um, but listening to those concerns, equally, um there were people who didn't want an Asian temple next to them because, you know, they have particular persuasions about people like that. And um sort of saying that's, that's not an opinion I'm going to listen to. Um, I'm not going to respect that. So um, yeah, having those sort of grown up discussions. Um, it's difficult in a political context because you will always get actors who will um twist things for political gain. Um, and that is completely contrary to trying to educate people about the system. Um, so it's just something that I try to do, whether through discussions or through social media, et cetera, trying to sort of demystify it because councils can seem quite remote from um the everyday lives of people sometimes.
I I think perhaps you need to carry on your job and start training in in other councils. And I have to say, you put me in mind of Christopher Hitchens' quotation, which is that um people should always be respected, but not all opinions should always be respected. Um, anyway, um, next question, so do you think central government puts too much pressure on local planning authorities? So for example, part of the current reforms are talking about ring fencing, planning fees. Um, would would that be transformational, do we think? Or is it just adding to the burden of local authorities?
Um, I think it will help. I think like all um all departments in councils, um planning struggles of being under-resourced and having increased pressure despite a reduction in funding and resources. Um, and so um increasing planning fees and and ring fencing them is is really helpful. Um, I also hope that sort of government's plans to recruit three hundred more planning officers will help. Although I think that it should be, I think the number should be a lot higher than that. Um, maybe three thousand from three hundred. Um, but in Milton Keynes, we thankfully are in a different position to a lot of local authorities. So we don't currently have sort of vacancies in our planning team. Um, we have a full suite of offices and um I still have my economic development hat on as well in my portfolio. And when I speak to the building sector and and um businesses in the city, I get really good feedback about um our planning service. Um, and one of the, one of the ways we've managed to tackle the the issues that planning authorities face um is setting up a planning academy with the R T P I. Um, so we've had people come and do placements with us while they're also um studying for planning qualifications. And we've also um done a lot of sort of digitisation work um in our planning department as well. So in the first quarter of this year, um ninety ninety seven percent of our applications were determined on time, um which is really good. Um, so, you know, my officers might disagree. Um, but I don't think that central government puts too much pressure on local planning authorities because I think planning is done best closest to communities, whether that's um on local authorities or like regional bodies as those sort of devolution plans come forward. Um, we are expected to do more with less, as we are in every aspect of local government. Um, but I think, you know, local planners do it best and place leadership is really important to planning.
Sounds like a bumper sticker. Let 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 me reverse it. Let me ima- let imagine that I could just, this is my final question, wave a magic wand and you became Matthew Pennycock for a week. What what one reform would you bring in based upon your experience of the the planning at the the grassroots at the coalface?
Um, yeah, so I think a lot of the reforms coming through are good. Um, I think as Charlie alluded to, one of the significant issues we're facing in Milton Keynes at the minute is round building safety regulations. Um, so a number of our sort of city centre developments are getting held up or are not being built out at the minute, which is quite a big issue for us. So I think if I had a week in Matt Pennycock's shoes, I'd sort of um try and go further in trying to fix that because I think it was absolutely right that um in response to Grenfell, that these that action was taken, it's incredibly important. But in response, we set up a regulator that doesn't work and that doesn't approve things. And because of that, sort of perversely, more people are being stuck in older unsuitable accommodation. And um so that's the thing that I'd sort of get to fixing first, um if I had the opportunity.
Thank you very much indeed. Thea, do you have a question?
I do. Thank you very much, Paul. Um, and my question is this, you told us born and bred in Milton Keynes and you want to serve your community. How would you best like to see the built environment of Milton Keynes change over the next decade for the better?
Oh, um, so we are currently going through our local plan process, so it's something that we're thinking about a lot. Um, so we want to see Milton Keynes sort of grow and develop. So we've got quite significant um urban extensions coming onto the city. Um, as I mentioned, we've got a target of around sixty thousand homes um in our local plan. But for me, um when I eventually retire, whenever that will be, um hopefully quite far in the future, I think the thing that I'll look back on is whether we've managed to um achieve a reimagined city centre in Milton Keynes. Because the way in which Milton Keynes was built, um there wasn't a focus on having a dense city centre um just because of the relatively low population at the time. Um, and I think despite our really strong um economy, uh with the seventh largest city economy in the country and despite being the fastest growing city in the U K, our city centre doesn't match that currently. Um, so I would like to see much, much, much denser housing in the city centre um for a more sort of vibrant city that matches the the um energy and the ambition that we have.
And I'm going to resist the temptation to ask a further question based on the point.
Oh, no, 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 you've got the memo.
I'm happy to answer it because I'm absolutely not opposed to housing in that location. Um, I agree that the point as it is has run its course. Um, I think the difficulty is that in our discussions, um we did want the structure of the point retained because it is such a uh um such an important part of our local heritage. And some of the the commentary in the decision, such as retaining that structure being tokenistic, is really disappointing um when you think of um heritage. I don't think if it was a a Tudor or a Georgian building, um retaining it in such a way would have been considered the same. So I think um there was not sufficient consideration given to our new town heritage. Um, so that's the last thing on that.
I think you should give everybody who has a case against Charlie the right to reply on the show, I think it's. Thank you, Thea. Chris, do you have a a question for Shanika?
I do. I have to say, I think it's so incredible that you've gone into politics. Policies can be absolutely brutal. Uh, you seem so utterly calm. Uh, um, which isn't every politician I've met. Um, and um brilliant, just such a good advert for um for politicians, younger politicians, uh BAME politicians and just, yeah, thank you very much. Charlie can't make it because he's, they're debating his own amendments in the House of Lords. Um, but I know that he asked you to come on the show. But I know that he asked you to come on the show and we're really grateful to you. Charlie gets lots and lots of fabulous guests and you are certainly one of those. My question is, how do you bring the community with you in terms of growth? How do you do that? Because you're successfully doing that in Milton Keynes, but that is certainly not the experience in many parts of the country.
Yeah, so thankfully we do have a population that's a bit more amenable to growth in Milton Keynes than I think a lot of other places have. When you get the sort of NIMBY types, people who don't want new development, you can point to the fact that their house wasn't there 58 years ago. And there were people 58 years ago who were saying the exact same thing, that we shouldn't be building and developing. So that is helpful. But I think we make a really concerted effort to demonstrate the benefits of growth and the benefits that growth bring to existing residents of Milton Keynes as well as just new residents. So Milton Keynes would not be in the state it is today. It would not be in such a good place if we hadn't focused on growth so much. So we've managed in the last 10 years to build seven new schools. We've managed to bring sort of crumbling community facilities back into use with energy efficiency improvements. And recently, we've just given 15.7 million pounds towards a radio therapy centre for our hospital. And that project costs 17 million pounds in total. So the vast majority of that really crucial health infrastructure was paid for by growth. And similarly, we've given five million pounds to an emergency assessment centre at the hospital and five million pounds towards a cancer centre. So those things are really tangible things that improve the lives of residents in Milton Keynes, both new ones and old ones. So being able to demonstrate those really crucial infrastructure benefits that, that new development brings is the way that we try to go about bringing people along in the process.
Brilliant. Thank you very much indeed.
Thanks, Chris. Sash, do you have a question for Shanika?
I do. Thank you so much, Shanika. I wanted to make two comments. I wanted to commend you on your approach to mental health. And I wanted also commend your, what appears extremely mature approach to politics and planning in particular. I made this comment when I was talking at the RTPI last week because I think it is, we are at crisis point in terms of how people deal with each other in planning. And your approach is exactly where we have got to aim to move to, to take the anger, the bitterness, the rage out. So hugely important people like you, councils like you and influence have a proper platform to express those views. So thank you. But I think the question I wanted to ask you touches on that because I think a lot of people are put off politics by the ranker, by the bitterness, by the fact that you've got to develop a ridiculously thick skin. How can we make it less aggressive, less confrontational? And frankly, consequently have much better people who are willing to expose themselves to, to public life and public office, frankly.
Well, thank you very much for your kind words. That's very nice of you. Look, I, I am still a very political person, so I will have political arguments where I feel it's necessary. But I don't think it should ever stray into being personal and that's a really important thing to me. Criticise people's actions, criticise sort of things they say, but don't necessarily criticise the person themselves. That's always been really important to me. But I think just having a sort of, a politics that looks different involves having different types of politicians and not just the same old people. So I try and work really hard to diversify politics. I ran a scheme nationally when I was, as you mentioned, I was working in Keir's team about recruiting more BME councillors and I run a similar scheme locally every year for our local Labour Party. So in our last election, we had sort of 50% women and 50% BME people in our target seats. And I think just having different kinds of, different kinds of voices and, and different people in politics can, can only help that. We're also quite lucky at Milton Keynes, the average age of our councillor is 36, which is quite different to most councils. And that's because we do all of our meetings in the evening. And so we won't have daytime meetings. And that means that, you know, people like me can work alongside being a politician. And I think in that way, you get different people and you get people who are in it because they really care and they want to help people and not necessarily people who just see politics as being a hobby horse and, and sort of a pastime. And you also get people who are much more rooted and connected to the issues that we're talking about at local council level. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Sash. So Charlie was going to ask the following question, but I think you've already answered it in the answers that you've already given. But I'll ask it anyway, just so you can best him a second time. And that way we can tell it, we can give him a tirade behind the scenes. So Charlie's question would have been, what lesson do you think Milton Keynes provides for the new towns that are currently proposed? Brackets, see everything you've said for the last half an hour, close to that.
I think there are a lot of lessons to be learned from Milton Keynes and we've really been trying hard to convey those to, to the government as they're moving forward with the new town process. Having, as I've mentioned, really good quality infrastructure, really good quality housing. And we also have extremely good quality green spaces in Milton Keynes. Part of that is having sort of a master plan approach and, and sticking to that. So if you look at the original plan for Milton Keynes and you look at a photo from a drone of Milton Keynes today, it's almost identical. So having a well-thought-out, good plan and sticking to it is really important. But I do think that one of the, the questions I ask of the current new town process is that Milton Keynes is so successful because of our scale and because we were large and we were designed to grow and expand. And the current sort of sizes that the new town process is looking at, I don't think you could replicate a Milton Keynes or like a Telford or a Swindon or a Stevenage at those scales. So I think size and scale is really important. There are a few sort of negatives that exist in Milton Keynes as well. There's sort of quite a lot of law around the Development Corporation, quite a lot of rigid desire and sort of putting on a pedestal of the Development Corporation. But as I mentioned, around the city centre, the sort of sparsity and lack of density in the city, there are some challenges. That lack of density in particular has made it almost impossible to have viable public transport services, which is a really big issue we're encountering now. So that sort of car-centric approach is a difficulty. So that's another lesson in terms of the negatives. But I think there are sort of a vast amount of lessons that can be learnt from Milton Keynes.
And of course, going right back to the start of the show, the most important lesson is to have a decent outdoor music venue, which you definitely have. Shanika, it's been an absolute joy to have you on the show. Thank you so much for giving the time. The fact that you presented a free MP partway through and bonus, perhaps shows that you have MPs on your knees as to whereabouts your trajectory will go for future, future politicking. Thank you for coming on the show. Thea, back to you.
Thank you very much, Paul, and thank you, Shanika. That was brilliant. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the comments, probably not. But there's some high praise for you and very well deserved. Really appreciate you coming on the show tonight. And for everyone else, have a great summer break and we look forward to seeing you for season 17, which starts on the 18th of September. So thanks, everyone, and goodbye.
Thanks, Shanika. And tell Chris we'll be in touch.
I'll hold him to it, don't worry.
Happy summer, everyone.
Take care, guys.